Santa Margarita. Call this meeting to order and we will begin with our pledge of allegiance. Mayor Potem, would you please lead us? Thank you very much. City Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Beal.
Here.
Mayor Potemager.
Here.
Councilmember Bear.
Here.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Sure. Thank you very much. Item one, schedule of future events. The city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor Beal and members of the city council. The first item is that the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting is canceled. We canceled that early in January. It's typically the time that we cancel meetings every second meeting in July for the summer break. Next, the summer concert series is in full swing. The concerts are held at Central Park on Sundays from six to eight P M. The upcoming scheduled concerts are as follows. Sunday, July thirteenth, Block of Eighties. Sunday, July twentieth, The Answer. July twenty-seventh, Redneck Rodeo. August third, Wayward Sons. And then we will finish the series on August tenth with Spin Town, although we are having a special performance by the School of Rock Band at four P M. Spin Town Band will begin at six P M. And we also have the Dreamers Market and some children's activities that day from four to eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item two, which was council member comments and reports. Two point one, council member comments. Want to add anything?
I think they have.
Right? Uh, councilmember Figueroa.
Uh, well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If you're looking for some additional activities for your children this summer, just want to remind parents to check out our very own R S M library. There's a summer reading challenge happening right now that's going on through August third. Also, there are quite a few meet the author events this summer for children that's going on through the end of July. And if you're a parent who's debating if your child's ready to enter school or not this fall, um, we have our kindergarten readiness program available at our library as well. So I just want to encourage parents to check all that out. And also, if you're looking for something fun to do with the kids at San Francisco Solano Catholic Church this weekend, having their Fiesta Day Solano. It's this Friday and Saturday night. It's from five to ten P M. And there's going to be live music, games, vendors, grapefruit selections, and the rides are back this, um, this year as well. So we hope you can come out and join the fun. Thank you very much.
Thanks for those comments. Councilmember Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that we'll be inspired by extraordinary talent this summer at the R S M Community Center, where an art exhibit featuring local artists is on display in July and August, hosted by R S M Cares. The featured artists include Judy Carroll, who's a mosaic artist, Judy Cunningham, a watercolorist, Olga Gruny, a oil, oil, oil painting is her medium, and Carol Parsons does floral and landscape watercolors. The exhibit is free and open to the public at the Bell Tower Community Center throughout July and August. And as the city council liaison to both the Capistrano and Saddleback Valley Unified School Districts, I'm pleased to share a brief update on recent outreach and collaboration efforts. In late April, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Chris Brown, who's the superintendent of Capistrano Unified, alongside with our assistant city manager, manager. And then more recently, I met with Dr. Crystal Turner, who's the superintendent of Saddleback Valley Unified, and board president Suzie Swartz, and, uh, also joining us was our city manager. These meetings were focused on strengthening our partnerships and supporting our local schools. A key topic of discussion was school safety, including the growing concerns around e-bike safety, and how we as a city can work collaboratively collaboratively with both, both districts to address these issues proactively. It was encouraging to have an open, productive conversations about how we can continue to work together for the well-being of our students and families here in Rancho Santa Margarita. And I look forward to building on these relationships and bringing forward initiatives that enhance safety and support in our school communities. Finally, the fire safety and preparedness community meeting and readiness expo is now available to watch on the city's YouTube channel. There's a fantastic lineup of speakers that share critical tips and updates that are beneficial to all in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item two point two, committee assignment reports. We have one tonight for the Orange County Fire Authority. Mayor Potem McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June twenty-sixth, I had the honor of attending the Orange County Fire Authority Fallen Heroes Memorial Ceremony honoring those who have died in the line of duty with the Orange County Fire Authority over the years. That took place again in the morning of June twenty-sixth, a very moving memorial. Uh, that evening, we had a very lengthy meeting with the Orange County Fire Authority. Uh, we approved, uh, and updated the community risk reduction fee schedule. We created a new position of Lead Helicopter Crew Chief, uh, who would be responsible for safe and effective air operations and training and evaluation of all flight crew members. Uh, the significance of that cannot be lost. We just had a fire in Laguna Canyon, you may have read, in Bluebird Canyon two days ago that was put out largely because of the helicopter, um, availability for the Orange County Fire Authority. And so without that, uh, being available, that fire would have been a heck of a lot worse than it is, than it was. Um. Also, uh, it's not lost on me that we're discussing that at the Orange County Fire Authority on June twenty-sixth, and tonight we're discussing our local hazard mitigation plan, which also includes, uh, a, a recitation, if we will, on the risk of fire, uh, wildfire in our community. So with that all being said, it was a very productive meeting and, uh, it just, once again, reassures me that we have the very best professionals, uh, guarding ourself, safe well-being, uh, from the Orange County Fire Authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bringing us to item three, presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have one. Mayor Potem, if you would please join me in front of the dais. We could do the special certificate of recognition. So this is item three point one, which is a certificate of recognition, and that business recognition to Alyssimo Coffee and Roasting. And then so at this time, I would like to invite forward, uh, the owner of the Alyssimo Coffee, Clement A. Young. Glad to have you here tonight, Clement. And I'd like to share with the audience the contents of our city's certificate of recognition. The city council of Rancho Santa Margarita gratefully acknowledges local businesses that achieve excellence in quality, service, and community engagement. And Alyssimo Coffee and Roasting, which was established in twenty seventeen, has earned a reputation for meticulous sourcing, boutique, in-house roasting, and an unwavering commitment to delivering the finest cup of coffee in town. Sourcing beans from nine distinguished regions to bring a world-class experience to their customers. And through their welcoming cafe atmosphere, complete with cozy seating and a friendly, friendly baristas, Alyssimo invites guests to savor a mini staycation with exceptional coffee, tea, and locally partnered treats in collaboration with Black Market Bakery, Crema Bakery, Duncan Mills Tea, and Renegade Goods. Numerous accolades reflect community admiration, including being ranked among the top small businesses in Rancho Santa Margarita, and earning praise on Yelp as the best place to get coffee in R S M. Alyssimo Coffee has actively supported the community, hosting events such as Coffee with a Coffee in partnership with the city and local law enforcement to foster community connections. The city of Rancho Santa Margarita celebrates businesses that cultivate this type of community pride, provide meaningful gathering spaces, and consistently delivering high-quality offerings with warmth and care. So Clement is the mayor of the city on behalf of my city council colleagues and all the residents of this great city. We want to recognize you. Take this opportunity to say thank you for all you do for our community and to congratulate Alyssimo Coffee and Roasting for your excellent business. Thank you, sir. So Clement, in addition to the certificate of recognition that is first and foremost, uh, from the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, uh, you've also just been presented with a certificate of recognition from our seventy-first district state Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez, from our thirty-eighth district state Senator Catherine Blakespear, and from, all the way from Washington, D.C., from our United States Congresswoman Youngkin. They all send their congratulations to you as well. Do you have to say anything?
Honestly, this is one of the best cities I've ever seen. Great community, the customers are amazing, city council's amazing, like even the sheriff's department is amazing. Like, I don't know personally, but I've seen a lot of your work, and they're amazing. So like, I have nothing bad to say about the city at all. It's like, it makes.
Thank you, Clement. Let's take some votes. All right, continuing on with tonight's agenda, that brings us to item four, public comments. This is the first two opportunities tonight to address the city council on any matter that is not listed on the city council's agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of this city council. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, and a time limit of fifteen minutes for this segment of the public comments portion of the agenda. There will be one additional public comment section at the, uh, tail end of our agenda tonight. So council colleagues, I'm going to call your attention to the fact that we have received two e-commerce. Uh, you each have a copy in front of you. They're both from Sean Gordon. He submitted one with the kiosk suggestion for the Bell Tower Regional Community Center. And his second e-comment dealt with landscaping issues on Los Flores and Villa Conguios. We also now have, I believe, four individuals that would like to deliver their, uh, public comments in person. So I'm going to call up first, Mr. Chris McLaughlin. Good evening, Chris. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I've always thought that local government functions best when it's focused on what we're going to pay for and how we're going to pay for it. To that end, I don't want any of my local property taxes going to fund federal immigration enforcement. What I mean is the property taxes that I pay to the county of Orange that come back from the county to R S M, the city then turns around and gives back to the county in the form of half of our city budget going to the police services contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. I don't want any of that being used to enforce federal immigration laws. That money should be strictly used for actual public safety and enforcing state laws. I also pay federal income taxes, so that's my contribution to funding, uh, federal immigration enforcement. On that note, Young Kim, along with every other Republican member of the House of Representatives, except for two, recently voted to spend thirty billion dollars on ICE enforcement, which is three times their current annual budget. They also approved another forty-five billion for detention facilities and even more billions to finish building the wall. So they've got plenty of money apparently for the national deportation program and don't need any help from our local sheriff's deputies. The thing is, though, and this is what has really gotten really twisted with the national narrative on immigration, is that we here in California know the difference between actual criminal aliens who committed real crimes and all of the hard-working, tax-paying brown people who just weren't born here. For a bit of historical context, I recently came across Ronald Reagan's final speeches president in nineteen eighty-nine. It's a really great speech. It's about four minutes. You can easily find it if you search for Reagan pro-immigration speech. Paraphrasing a bit here, but his main point was that you can go to live in France or Japan, but you cannot become a Frenchman or Japanese. But that anywhere from, anyone from any corner of the earth can come to live in America and become an American. Today, that sounds like some radical left globalist propaganda, but that was Ronald Reagan reminding everyone that welcoming immigrants to our country is not only something that has always made our nation great, but if they ever shut the door on welcoming new immigrants from around the world, we would significantly lose our place as a global leader. So I'm not sure what happened to the conservative movement in America, but in thirty-six years, we went from Ronald Reagan and a shining city on a hill and the U.S. being a beacon of freedom and hope for the world, to Stephen Miller and everyone who wasn't born here needs to go, regardless of whether they've committed a real crime or not. So I don't know about the rest of the country, but here in California, we aren't confused about immigrants being bad for America. And that's not my words. That's coming from Ronald Reagan, the former governor of California and the patron saint of the modern Republican Party. Here we can tell the difference between a gang member with tattoos covering his face and neck and an old guy in Anaheim who's been mowing lawns here for thirty years, whose three sons all stepped on the hill of footprints at Paris Island. So I don't want any of my local property taxes that are dedicated for local law enforcement to go towards helping ICE. I would expect our police services to respond to a request from ICE for assistance with a hard no. Here we know that if you're using tax records to target illegals, it was never about immigrants not paying taxes. If you're raiding workplaces to round up deportees, it was never about immigrants not having a job. If you're deporting women and children, it was never about criminal gang members. If you're seizing people at their immigration hearings, it was never about immigrants following the process and doing it the legal way. And if you're stoked to have the first escaped detainee malted death by an alligator in Florida, please don't call yourself a Christian ever again. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Next step is Amber Bloom. Good evening, Amber. Welcome.
Good evening. Just as a correction, my name is Bloomer, but thank you. I probably didn't, uh, spell things correctly on the phone, so no worries. I just wanted, sorry.
My apologies.
No problem at all. Um, at the start of our council meeting last time, councilmember Figueroa stated as what seemed like fact that there would be a sixty-five cent increase in the cost of gallon of gas effective July first. I just wanted to point out that that did not actually happen. So if anybody actually saw that, I would be very surprised. I have to admit, at the time, I was slightly confused about why this was mentioned. We normally address R S M issues. And while that does impact the people of R S M, it's not something over which the local city council has any jurisdiction. So as I mentioned, there was actually no increase in the gallon of gas, except for a one point six, a one point six cent per gallon increase, not a sixty-five cent increase. This was an actual fact due to an automatic annual adjustment built into Senate Bill One, S B One, also known as the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand seventeen, which was approved by legislature in two thousand seventeen and by voters in two thousand eighteen. I'm not sure why that was brought up. I have a suspicion, but it's only a suspicion, so it's my assumption that perhaps it was regarding the fact that possibly it was put in because of Governor Newsom's office. So I also just want to point out that at that point in time, when that bill went into place, Governor Newsom was not in office. And in actual fact, it had nothing to do with Governor Newsom. So to be clear, for about the fourth or fifth time, there was no new sixty-five cent tax per gallon on gas. And we should use accurate facts, not myths or anything else when we come to talking about impacts on R S M residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next step is Potter, sir.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Tasia Search. I'm a thirty-year resident of the city of Rancho Santa Margarita. I was born in Pocatello, Idaho, lived in the U.S. my entire life. I'm here tonight because I'm horrified and disgusted with what is happening in our country right now. Notably in California, Los Angeles, and Orange County. I'm calling upon the city council tonight to make a resolution, making a call to action to all of its federal elective representatives in Congress to advocate on behalf of immigrants who reside and work in the city of Rancho Santa Margarita to remove ICE, military, and other federal enforcement personnel from the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, and call for the support to the impact the people impacted by immigration raids and their actions and commitments. To that end, I'm asking the city council to devote, to direct the city manager to establish an emergency assistant program, assistance program for families impacted by immigration enforcement, using a hundred thousand dollars from the city events budget without canceling any events. The city council should also direct staff to bring back a report within ninety days on the status of the assistance fund for consideration of additional funding. And lastly, on a more personal note, no one talks about what happens in the minutes after someone is taken. It's a car still idling, a car seat in the back, a wallet sitting on the dash, half a breakfast sandwich on the floorboard, still warm. There are children too, some in the backseat, some dropped off at daycare, never picked up, some waiting at a bus stop for parents who never arrive. You don't need to be a legal scholar to know this is wrong. You just need to be human. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Brianne. Welcome.
Hi, good to see you again. Uh, first, I want to plus one Chris and Tasia's comments. Um, and, uh, wanted to come today and say, I spoke to the city council on June twenty-fifth, the last meeting about the ongoing lawsuit with Michelle Jackson over the redistricting maps that R S M approved. At that meeting, I was told by both the mayor and city attorney that my facts were wrong. In fact, I was told off the record that I was embarrassing myself. So I asked for clarification and filed a public records request. In response, the city sent me a hundred and five pages of PDFs, no summary, no explanation. But here's what I learned. The current map created by the council allows three members who live near each other by the golf course to remain in office and run again. The map leaves out the central part of town, which doesn't have the same representation. The city confirmed that Jackson followed the California Voting Rights Act by sending a notice of violation, which is a step one in the legal process. Some council members have said what Jackson, Jackson is doing is illegal. That word illegal was used, so I dug deeper. Jackson submitted a legal letter under the California Voting Rights Act, asking R S M to redistrict for more equitable voting. The city complied, splitting R S M into four districts with an at-large mayor. Three council members ended up in the same neighborhood. Uh, that redistricting was legal. If someone believes their voting rights are harmed, they have the right to sue, and that's what's happening. Whether that claim has merit is for the courts to decide, not the council or me. It's not what I'm here to do. What I do know, under the new system, the mayor now picks planning commissioners, and they're just, the council just ratifies them. Before, each member had their own pick, so that's a major shift in power. Legal fees to fight the Jackson suit so far totaled around thirty-eight thousand dollars, with Jackson's requested invoice at thirty-seven thousand five hundred. The case hasn't gone to court yet. Other cities have paid the invoice and moved on. Those that fought ended up paying far more. At the last meeting, I was told I didn't know the facts by some members of this council. They told me that during my public comment after the meeting, when no one was recording. I'm here to say, I do know the facts. I only have a few minutes here, but there is more. I got one number wrong last meeting. Sorry about that. But the larger issue is real. This is about power. Remember, some of these members have been on council since the city was founded, and some on this council are doing everything they can to keep that power, but we can vote them out in twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved in one motion, unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on any consent calendar item. I'm going to pull item five point four at the request of one of our residents. And, um, we need to pull any other items other than five. I'll move the balance of the consent. You have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. So we'll now, uh, handle five point four separately. This is an adoption of an ordinance related to the fire hazard severity zone map for the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, local responsibility area. Um, we've already got the staff report before us, which we've all reviewed. So I'm going to call forward at this point, um, member of the public that wish to speak on this matter, and that is Craig Innis. Good evening, Craig. Welcome.
Good evening, council members and staff. Um, I was at the last council meeting two weeks ago, and I spoke up against the egregious, uh, ordinance that you're planning to endorse tonight. And I'd like to address, uh, Potem, uh, Mayor McGurk's comments. Insurance companies don't consider the, uh, uh, CAL FIRE, uh, rating system. Uh, that's not true. They wouldn't have pulled out of California if they had not, and they wouldn't have set up a plan or spin setup, but they wouldn't have admitted thirty, one-third of the insured in that plan are in moderate fire areas. Um, I think that they are aware of the CAL FIRE map, and I think the CAL FIRE map is an egregious, uh, dis service to the community here, and I'd like for you to stand up for that, uh, uh, opposition to that map. It's based on purely A I data, um, machine bias data. It's based on prior history, which A I data is, and that prior history is, is a distortion of the facts. This, this community is not, uh, and, and a very high fire area that we are. Uh, the fire hazard that we had in September last year was a man-made, uh, ignition from a public utility truck, an airport fire that was not a natural fire. And why are we being penalized for this, uh, act? And, and why is it being proper proposed that we address this with an ordinance? So address that with penalties, fees, if there's not, uh, uh, adherence to the ordinance. There's seventeen sections, fourteen sections in that ordinance, not just that one section you have, uh, for, uh, the, uh, it says in sequence, but there are fourteen additional sections in that. And two of those sections pertain to fees or fines. Uh, one, one section pertains to a public nuisance, uh, if there were ones, if there's a violation. Now that's a misdemeanor, and, and these fines can go on your, um, tax property taxes. And I don't believe that that's fair because these, uh, maps, uh, there's a swath in Rancho Santa Margarita. You said that seventy percent keep under moderate, high, and very high. Uh, that, that doesn't, uh, include the whole city. Seventy percent is not the whole city. And structural, uh, components of that swath that is not included are structural, uh, homes or apartments or condominiums. A structural fire is hotter, burns hotter, and longer than a tree on fire. I have, uh, two hundred trees on the property I live on. And surrounding property are sixty trees that are Samark's, uh, responsibility. Those trees have not been trimmed for a long time. There's dead limbs in it, and there's a, there are full, full-growth trees. And I'm not against trees at all. A tree, um, it takes in forty-five pounds CO2 every year. That's, uh, almost ten thousand, uh, pounds, uh, of, uh, CO2 with, with two hundred trees we have on property. And that's equal to that amount in oxygen that it releases. Um, Samark.
Craig, you're going to have to wrap up your comments.
Okay. So I wanted to ask the, uh, city to coordinate Samark. I'm not sure the data line there is stronger than Mike's data line. And have them trim the trees around the property because they are fire danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. So I appreciate our speaker's, uh, comments, and he made them at our last meeting as well. My recollection from reading the staff report from our last meeting is the city of Rancho Santa Margarita is mandated to adopt these maps, um, by the state. And our only discretion would be to By the state, and our only discretion would be to make the maps more severe. More owners upon the residents. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So are you able to address what could happen to the city if we did not adopt what is before us tonight? What can the state, what would the state do to us?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, it's not just Rancho Santa Margarita. It's all cities in the state of California are required to adhere to this program. To the timeframes for adoption of these ordinances to adopt maps. In my opinion, if cities do not do so, it will be referred to the California Attorney General's Office for a writ of mandate to compel the cities to do so. To my knowledge, no city has not complied at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? I'm gonna entertain a motion to adopt the staff recommendation on five point four. The motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for your comments, Craig. Alright, that concludes the consent calendar. We'll now move on to public hearing items. Under item six, six point one. The city of Rancho Santa Margarita Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption and Safety Element Update. Ms. Kuda, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Our consultant, Starla Barker with De novo Planning Group, will provide a brief presentation. This is a follow-up to an item you all saw last November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. As Starla mentioned, my name is Starla Barker with De novo Planning Group, and I have been before you before. I'm happy to be back this evening to present kind of the, one of the last steps of the hazard mitigation plan. I wanted to just briefly go over for the audience and just a brief reminder what we're talking about when we're talking about a local hazard mitigation plan. Why the city is updating the current plan, the review process, the general plan safety element amendment that's also before you as well as next steps. So just a brief reminder, hazard mitigation plan, it is a local specific to the city of Rancho Santa Margarita. It does identify hazards that have a likelihood of occurring and the community's risk and vulnerability to those hazards. The crux of the mitigation plan is the mitigation actions. That look at opportunities to actually reduce those vulnerabilities and risks. Understanding we can't eliminate natural hazards, but the opportunity to see if we can lessen the risk and vulnerabilities associated with those. And then providing policies and actions to increase resilience. So the city is updating the hazard mitigation plan to basically confirm and update the threats and hazards, including the risks. The plan is required by FEMA to be updated every five years, so this is in line with that five-year update. Looking at making the community more disaster resistant and really most importantly. Is making sure that the city can maintain eligibility for federal emergency grant funds. That become eligible when you have a FEMA compliant and adopted hazard mitigation plan. So the review process, just to recall, we were in front of the planning commission last November. The planning commission did provide comments and recommended that the city council authorize submittal of the hazard mitigation plan to CAL OES. Excuse me, CAL OES is required to review the plan, provide comments, ensure that all the requirements are being met. And prior to submitting to FEMA. We came before you on November thirteenth of last year. And received authorization to submit the hazard mitigation plan to CAL OES for their review. CAL OES review occurred from November to, last year to February of this year. They did determine that all requirements were met. One requirement was identified in, identified as met but needs improvement. It basically involved minor revisions to describe vulnerabilities to specific hazards. And clarify that the plan addressed climate change, basically some terminology corrections. So once those revisions were made and submitted back to CAL OES. CAL OES determined that they found that the plan was compliant and submitted it to FEMA for their review. That occurred from March to April of this year, and we did receive what FEMA issues as approvable pending adoption. They didn't have any additional comments or revisions necessary to make sure that the plan was compliant. We were before the planning commission last month, and the planning commission did recommend city council approval of. An amendment to the general plan safety element, which I will describe in a minute, as well as adoption of the local hazard mitigation plan. So the purpose of the general plan safety element amendment is AB twenty-one forty does provide opportunity for additional state. Funding cost share on eligible projects. In order to make sure that the city is compliant, you have to have an adopted, a FEMA-approved adopted hazard mitigation plan. And it has to be adopted into the general plan safety element. So really, the amendment to the safety element is just a text amendment, making sure that the language is specific to this hazard mitigation plan. And adoption of the hazard mitigation plan. And also, it requires that you make sure that the hazard mitigation plan is easily, easily accessible, available to the public. The hazard mitigation plan has always been available on the city's website. It will continue to be available. So the next steps is here tonight for, to request city council adoption and approval of the resolutions for the general plan. Amendment to the safety element as well as to adopt the local hazard mitigation plan. After this, we will, if, if approved, the adopted resolution, resolution will be submitted to FEMA and to CAL OES. For what, then we receive final approval of the plan. We also have to demonstrate that the city did incorporate by reference the hazard mitigation plan into the safety element, and that's provided to CAL OES. We would receive FEMA final approval and also CAL OES approval for AB twenty-one forty. That is my presentation. I'm here for questions if needed.
Thank you very much for that report and for the very comprehensive plan that's in our written materials. Council colleagues, do you have any questions for staff? Council member Figueroa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I guess what I was encountering, the local hazard mitigation plan gets updated every five years, you said, correct? Is that a state mandate?
It's required by FEMA.
It's required by FEMA. Alright, so every five years, we're gonna be seeing this again. Whatever disasters happen in the state of California, I'm sure that the state, the FEMA puts those in, right? In terms of what we would be looking at on the revisions.
Yeah, so when the plan is updated, you go back and look from the time that the plan had started to be initiated and updated this time. What has occurred since then? Has anything changed? Anything changed specific to the local city, any, any events that have occurred, any state emergencies, anything like that? Or just all updated from that previous time?
Okay, and the grant funding that was available from AB twenty-one forty, what was the amount that the city received from now?
So the, the AB twenty-one forty is the bill that allows us to receive extra cost share. Based on this approved document and its implementation into the safety element. So there's no funding currently. But it, it makes us eligible for funding in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last chance, any questions for staff? Okay, then this is a public hearing item, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. And this will be the time for us to receive any public testimony. Mr. City Clerk, I don't believe I have any speaker request cards.
We have none.
Okay, anyone care to speak? Saying none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn the matter over to my counsel for discussion and deliberation and a motion. Am I right? Any comments, questions, discussion? We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation before us. Do you have a question? So I have a motion and a second. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Bringing us to item six point two. Adoption of a general plan amendment twenty-five dash zero zero one to update the circulation element. And adoption of the third addendum to the twenty-twenty general plan final environmental impact report. Ms. Kuda, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This circulation element update is the last of a number of general plan updates. I'll give a little bit of history. Of the city's general plan. So as you're aware, state law requires every city to adopt a general plan. It has seven mandatory elements. A general plan is a long-range plan to guide development of the city, and it generally has a ten to twenty-year shelf life. It identifies the community's priorities and a vision for the future. The city's first general plan was adopted in two thousand and two. In twenty twenty, we did a fairly comprehensive update where we updated the land use noise, safety, conservation, open space, and economic development elements. And then along with the state cycle, we updated the housing element in two thousand and twenty-two. And that went along with another update to the safety element as required by state law. And then last year, we updated the land use element to be consistent with that housing element. The circulation element has not been updated since two thousand and fourteen, and this, with this update, we'll have a fully updated general plan with a, a nice long shelf life. The focus of this update is to update the regulatory setting for new legislation. And for internal consistency with all those other updates that I just talked about. Also, we are recommending implementation of transportation study guidelines, which I'll talk about in a moment. All of the city's general plan elements follow the same framework. They all have an introduction, which describes the purpose and intent of that element. There's an issues, goals, and policies section, which describes the, the goals and policies for that topic area. And then there's a plan, which is an overview of the potential actions to implement those goals and policies. This circulation element follows that same, same structure. It serves as a guide for future development, and the intent of this circulation element is to provide for a balanced multimodal network. For all roadway users. That's a concept called complete streets, which we'll talk about in a moment. Here, I've summarized four notable goal and policy changes. That is to promote safe and accessible circulation system that accommodates all user types. Again, that's, that's known as complete streets. Policy one point nine integrates some of the concepts from the safety element. Policy one point six discusses those transportation study guidelines. And then policy two point three, we will work with regional partners to plan for emerging transportation mode and technologies. That's a very brief update of some of the more significant goal and policy updates. Attachment C D or staff report includes a table that looks like this, which is a side-by-side summary of the changes from the two thousand and fourteen. Circulation element to what is proposed tonight. The transportation study guidelines, I just want to touch on briefly. We are not proposing those tonight. We did take those to the planning commission back a couple of months ago, but on the very same day. As the transportation study guidelines and this circulation element were to go before our planning commission, there was a, a court case decided and published. Which changed the way that the city is able to utilize certain guidance from OPR, the. Office of Planning and Research. So we have pulled those transportation study guidelines back. We are working through that issue, and we do anticipate having those ready. Shortly, in, in the next couple of months. Those will be important because they will ensure that there's consistent evaluation of all future development projects. Really, this is, this is good because we do have the ability to have additional housing development come in through the, those housing element sites. That were approved last year, and this will set forth some guidance for evaluation of traffic impacts for those and any other project that comes forward. Again, you're all aware of the requirements for environmental review. Any update to the general plan is considered a project. And is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. The city council adopted a general plan program level EIR back in two thousand and twenty. And so we are able to tear off of that EIR for subsequent updates to our general plan. As long as we can find that the update doesn't result in any new significant environmental impacts. Or a substantial increase in severity of a previously identified significant impact. We can do that. We can make that finding with this circulation element update, and there's an addendum in your packet which walks through all of those facts. So with that, staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt two resolutions. The first resolution adopts that CEQA addendum. To comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. And the second resolution will adopt that update to the general plan circulation element. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Our consultants are here in the audience, as well as our principal planner, who was the project manager.
Thank you, Ms. Kuda. Appreciate that report. Council colleagues, any questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I'm looking at pages twenty-three and twenty-four of the staff report, and in reference, these are maps. And it has obviously the borders of the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, which, as we all know, does not include Cota de Casa. Or Los Flores or Wagon Wheel, but there's a sphere of influence line. And I'm wondering, what is the significance of that? Frankly, I saw it also on the hazard mitigation plan as well. What is this, the effect? Anything that we adopt, does it, I can't imagine that it affects unincorporated areas.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's just, it's a boundary that is kind of part of the city's official boundary. It's a sphere of influence. Where if annexations were to occur, that's where LAFCO has identified that potential. You're correct. Nothing that we do here affects those areas. It's just throughout the general plan, you'll see. That are, will have the corporate boundary as well as the sphere of influence. It's for consistency throughout the different general plan elements.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you. Am I right? Any questions for staff? Thank you once again for your report and from the written materials and your oral report today. This seems rather. Minor in terms of the changes and updates that we've made, just minor text changes. To better reflect the community's circulation needs and referencing updated statutes that have come into place since the last adoption. There's really nothing material being changed here, is there?
That's correct. It's, it's an update, not a, a strong revision.
Thank you, okay. So once again, this is a public hearing item. Unless there's any other questions for staff, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And this will be the time for the council to receive testimony from the public. Once again, I have no speaker request cards. Can anyone care to speak?
I would like to speak. I just have a question. Am I allowed to do that? I didn't do a card.
Yes, you may.
You need to fill out a card, but you can do that after you speak, Brianne, come on up.
Yeah, I mean, need to just say. I have a question for you. I'm sorry, is it Ms. Kuda? Okay, I want to pronounce right. So circulation is for like traffic movement too throughout the city? Is that part of it?
Brianne, you're supposed to make comments, not really a discussion back and forth.
I thought you said it was a public hearing.
It is. So this is your opportunity to give us your testimony, your thoughts on what is before us.
Oh, I was just telling.
Tell us your questions and make it address.
I'll just check the post to see if you can come back next time and let you know, but. So I have questions around if it includes traffic, because the stuff that was put up there was pretty generic. If it does, then does it also include in the general plan what the council passed last year? Which was the cameras that are all filming all of us called the flock? Is that part of that as well? Okay, so that's my question, and it will just stay in the air. Great, thank you.
The flock cameras are a tool for our police services to utilize to monitor traffic flow in the event that there have been crimes. It helps to track down criminals. Chief, I don't know if you'd like to address that in a little more detail.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The, the flock cameras are an investigative tool for law enforcement. So contrary to the misconception that big brother or law enforcement is always watching you. What we're doing is monitoring criminal activity if necessary, based on license plate information only. That makes sense.
Thank you.
And as far as traffic being included in the circulation element, did you want to just address that?
Yes, all types of circulation vehicular and non-vehicular are addressed in the circulation element.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
If, if I may, the, the flock cameras do not record traffic, and so they're not part of the, the circulation element. There's their license plate.
License plate.
And they take still photos of license plates. They don't, they don't monitor, they don't record traffic. They, they are not a part of the traffic circulation system.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And Brianne, if you haven't, if you would, fill out a card and give it to our city clerk for this item. That'd be great. Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn the matter over to the city council. Council colleagues. Questions, comments? Council, council member Holloway.
Just thanks to staff for all this, both of these updates. Large amount of work, a lot of information. Thank you for what you do. Very thorough. That's why we probably don't have many questions. We've seen most of this. So thank you for what you've done here.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mayor Pro Tem?
Just very briefly, I would concur. For those who aren't familiar with, with the back, and they're just looking at the. A PowerPoint presentation. Our book is, is this book, it is thick, and so.
And so uh, one reason why, as council member Holloway just mentioned, there are not a lot of questions because pretty much everything's been answered already. So thank you, Ms. Kuda, for a very uh thorough presentation. I appreciate it.
Am I right? All right, um, so we've concluded with the council discussion. Is there a motion to adopt the staff recommendations, both of the resolutions that are proposed?
Same.
Same.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to item six point three, which is a proposed update to the city's false alarm fee. Chief, you're up. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and and Council. Uh, so currently, the uh false alarm fee for uh sheriff response is is set at one hundred and forty one dollars. Uh, the increase is set to go to two hundred and nine dollars. And what that is, is uh after the third and subsequent false alarm that law enforcement responds to, the businesses and our residents will be charged these fees. So the proposal is uh for the city to adopt the county's ordinance for the uh false alarm fee to increase from one hundred and forty one dollars to two hundred and nine dollars. And again, that's for after the third and subsequent response of a false alarm or an intentional alarm setting.
Thank you, chief. So is, do I understand correctly that a business owner could have in one year uh three free false alarms?
That is correct.
And so there's no fee of any kind if it happens three times. It's only on the fourth time when we're trying to nudge them to.
Right, that's correct. And and according to the county, this is meant to uh correct certain behaviors, right? So sometimes there are systems that are faulty and uh but the fees are meant to encourage both residents and business owners to number one, uh, correct any systems that are uh generating a false alarm so that it doesn't, for lack of of better words, waste police resources. And uh to make sure that when we do respond, it's for the correct timing and and for what we need to respond for, which is an actual alarm and not an accident. So if you're, if you're gonna continue to get uh accidental alarms and after the third one, then you will be receiving a charge. And that, that fee is gonna go from one hundred and forty one dollars to two hundred and nine dollars.
Can you address what sort of resources are expanded expended when there is an alarm like this that goes off?
Absolutely. So a alert alarm is gonna generate a uh police response from our deputies. Uh, typically, just based on the nature of the alarm and the information that we receive, the alarm company, typically, one and or two deputies will respond to the location. Uh, a lot of times that takes uh some resources depending on the location. For example, colds or large establishment will will take a lot of time for deputies to determine if the alarm is legitimate or not. Uh, so that takes away our resources from serving the rest of the community where it's needed. A lot of times it can take thirty minutes, forty minutes. It just depends on the nature of the the location and the circumstances involved.
So if your deputies are responding to one of those alarms and are tied up for a half hour, that could mean longer response times to other members of the community that might have a a real emergency.
That's correct. And we need to determine if the uh alarm is legitimate or not. So we can't just show up to a location and say it's it's a false. There has to be a certain checks that we go through, making sure that the business is secure, that there's no broken windows, broken locks, and again, and that can take some time. Uh, meanwhile, there's other activity going on in the city and we don't have unlimited resources. So that takes away our response from uh serving the public elsewhere.
Can you confirm the last time that the fee was set?
I believe that was in two thousand.
No, it was twenty twenty one.
Sorry, twenty twenty one, correct. Twenty twenty one was the last fee and it was at one hundred and forty one dollars.
Okay, and we're just bringing it in consistency with the county number?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, also I'd add that the county uh did request that their cities increase the fee to match. So it wasn't just they, we decided, we saw it and decided to bring it. But it was a request by the county of Orange and the Sheriff's Department to actually implement this uh increased fee as a match.
Across all the cities?
Across all of the cities that they serve, yes.
Okay, appreciate that clarification. Colleagues, any questions for staff? Council member Figo Roca.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief, I was just wondering, um, do you know by chance how often our deputies respond to false alarms? Like, for example, on a weekly basis, how many calls you might get?
Can't give you a weekly basis, but I was able to pull some data for uh responses since twenty twenty four to June of this year. And it looks like we responded to eighty uh false alarm calls. So I mean, we can do the math on average, but eighty in the last eighteen months.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Council member Holloway.
Thank you. Another question, but just a comment. Thank you for uh, Chief, for for looking into this. Um, it is a a drain on resources. Certainly I want to respond. Um, do you feel like the businesses, I know you've been here just a short time, but you worked in other agencies, that this fine, if you will, after the third time does motivate the business owner? And I assume the bulk of these are businesses, not residential. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. According to the data that I pulled, there was not one resident that was billed.
Do you feel like this, this fee, if you will, motivates business owners to have better communication with their uh alarm companies or whatever needs to be done?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And this will be the time to receive testimony from the public. I don't believe I'm gonna speak to request cards when anyone care to speak on this side. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn this matter over to the city council for any discussion or a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation. The resolution has set forth under item six point three.
I will move uh this item.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. That brings us to item seven, new business. There is none. Eight continued items. We have none. So we now are at item nine, public comments. This is the second and last time to address the city council on any matter not listed on our agenda, but that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And uh, I have two speakers that have asked to uh address our, the council now. First up is Amber Blue. Hi, Amber.
Uh, oh, I gotta switch glasses. First of all, I just wanted to recognize um Jennifer Savantis. I really see that you know your stuff, like you chime in with all lots of information. So I really appreciate your knowledge. It's really useful. Um, to the council, um, I wanted to ask, you know, there's this confusion about when you can respond and when you can't. It's really unclear to me when you can respond and when you can't, and I'm hoping that we can get some clarification. Um, at the last meeting, I asked a question about how the public can get items placed on the agenda. I was told, I I believe, that the council can't actually respond during public comment. And yet, as I walked away on a different subject, uh, maybe or you actually responded. And the same thing happened this evening. So I'm really genuinely curious about how that whole system works. We give pimp up public comment. We sometimes get comments, we don't sometimes. So I'm just curious how that works.
Sure.
So in general, I have two questions. One, and how can council members respond to public comments and questions without resorting to private after-meeting conversations? I believe the public would be very interested in hearing the answers to some of the questions that are being raised. In addition, it would save council members time as they wouldn't have to address the public separately on the same topic after the meeting, time and time again, as we'd all hear the response in a meeting. And I'll be perfectly honest, I appreciate anybody's offer to have a conversation with me after the meeting, but I'm actually not comfortable doing that anymore. So I don't know how I get answers or responses to these questions. Secondly, as I asked last week, which is where I started with this whole thing, how can members of the public get an item added to the city council agenda? It's my understanding that it requires two council members to agree to add an item to the city meeting agenda, which effectively means that if I can't convince somehow accounts, two council members to add something to the agenda, it just doesn't get added. And they understand we can't kind of willy nilly just add items left and right. But I would love to see some adjustments so that public members can actually get items for discussion and that there is some form of discussion. Maybe I'm missing some other meeting that there is normally. I don't know. But again, I don't know what the process is. So if I could get some feedback somehow, that would be really useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. I appreciate your comments. I'll share with you briefly, the California Brown Act limits our ability to engage in a lengthy discussion on any item that is not listed on the agenda. We have a little bit of discretion to give a quick response. Um, uh, Mr. City Attorney, maybe you could just briefly address the comments.
Mayor, you are correct. The the issue is governed by state law. It's the Ralph M. Brown Act. And the answers to the questions that have been raised, at least question number one, is set forth in city council policy number four point four. Residents are able to obtain that in the back room and also a copy of it from the city clerk's office. But that does answer question number one. It provides what can and cannot be done by the city council with respect to non-agendized items. It sets forth a very clear answer to that question.
Any comment on about placing items on the agenda, how that happens?
Uh, placing items on the agenda is controlled by the city council. This is a representative form of government and that, I believe the speaker did answer the question correctly.
It takes all of his counsel.
Sure.
Correct. That's the answer. Okay, our next speaker is Brienne Boyle.
Well, here we go.
Good evening, Brienne. Welcome.
Nice to see you guys again. Um. So actually, this is great because I have a comment that's similar to um procedure four point four. So at the June twenty fifth meeting that I was at, the last meeting, I spoke during the public comment section and after I spoke, Mayor Tony Beal addressed me directly while I was at the podium. He stated his version of the story I was sharing and then followed with this, and I quote from the June twenty fifth recording. "Just wanted to make sure you were aware of what the facts actually are." This was Tony Beal making a public rebuttal to my statement without giving me a chance to respond. To make sure I understood the public comment process correctly, I reviewed the city's policies and procedures, section four point four, which says, one, council members may question speakers, but only after being recognized by the presiding officer. Two, they may not engage speakers in dialogue, only in a question and answer format. Three, during public comment on non-agenda items, council members shall not engage in extended discussion or deliberation. Presume that also means after a meeting. After reading those, it seems like a clear violation from Mayor Beal in the last meeting. Despite that, I was invited to speak to the mayor off record after the meeting, away from the public forum. Today, I want to ask the council to respect its own policies and that the format that protects transparency and public comment. Now, a shift to um something else that's important. Based on uh something with the budget, the twenty one thousand eight hundred forty five dollar decrease in building maintenance costs in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, which covers things like city hall decorations. I'd like to ask that the city consider buying one pride flag. One, to fly during the month of June to represent RSM city residents. It seems there's enough money for that. I also want to voice support for council member Bayer's request in the last meeting to explore adding more suicide prevention signs to the Antonio Parkway Bridge. Last meeting, council member Holloway said, "It's hard to determine the value of those signs." I believe the cost of a few signs is worth it if they save even one life. And if the budget is the issue, I'm confident this community would donate, whether for those signs or for a pride flag. I know I would do that, um, but I shouldn't have to. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brienne. I'm confident there was no violation after the last meeting. That concluded because you aren't able to give a brief response. And um after a meeting, it's concluded, I believe California law provides no restrictions on the ability of council members to speak freely to their constituents and share information and thoughts. Uh, Mr. City Manager, or City Attorney, can you just?
Yes, that's exactly correct. Uh, once the meeting has concluded, individual council members are free to meet with their constituents, whether that's residents or business owners. The Brown Act only applies to council members and with respect to public comments, it's during a noticed, agendized city council meeting where the rules and limitations about public comments and non-agendized items are are prevalent. And again, city council policy four point four is quite clear on that point and it tracks state law. It's not ambiguous and it's not subject to interpretation.
Thank you for that clarification. I have no other speaker requests tonight, so we're gonna move on to item ten, the city manager's report, the city manager.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Item eleven, matters presented by the mayor and council members. Anything to my left? Mayor Putnam?
Very briefly, I want to thank uh everyone sitting up here, as well as the public, for showing up at pavilions, I think, two Saturdays ago to uh collect food for RSM cares for those in need here in Rancho Santa Margarita. We collected a lot of food, a lot, a lot of food. Three truckloads of food were eventually stored away for the RSM care food pantry, which provides food for the underprivileged or those in need twice a month. So uh, thank you to all who showed up at pavilions, including my city council colleagues, to um to work the booths. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything to my right, Carrie? Okay, so that concludes item number eleven. We're now come uh done with our agenda. We're gonna adjourn. The next regular meeting of the city council will be held Wednesday, August thirteenth or twenty twenty five, seven P M. Right here in our council chambers. Thanks for your attendance. This meeting is adjourned.